Welcome, everybody, to Tuesday, December twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen, Board of Selectmen's meeting. We have a brief agenda tonight. At six thirty, we're gonna go into executive session. This, um, discuss Chief Hatfield, Fire Chief Contract Discussion. We'll come back out of executive session and I'll read the regular scheduled agenda. Got a motion to go into executive session?
Moved to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion made second.
For purposes of, 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 uh, negotia- negotiation of non-union contracts.
For negotiation of non-union contract.
Second.
Motion made second, eight for the discussion. See none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mark, yes?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
David, yes. Uh, welcome, everybody, to, uh, Tuesday, December twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen Board of Selectmen's meeting. We just came out of executive session. We're now gonna go into open session. I'll read the agenda for tonight. Seven o'clock, citizens input, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance of meeting. Seven oh five, Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen Goals for two thousand seventeen. Seven twenty-five, Selectmen's Update. Seven thirty-five, William Keegan Junior Town Manager Update. Seven forty-five, Mary Beth Bernard Assistant Town Manager Update. Bill, do you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, being a little bit past seven, is there anybody here for citizens input?
Trying to figure out if this is when we're supposed to-
Yes, this is, this is the piece, I'm sorry, yeah.
This is it.
Uh, I don't know what to do procedurally. Uh, my name is David Reed. I represent the Foxborough J.C.s. And what we'd like to do tonight is present some funds that the J.C.s, in conjunction with the Rotary and the Lions, have raised, went presented to the Fox, uh, Foxborough Fire Department in their, their goal to get a new Sparky the Dog costume for educating children on fire safety.
Excellent.
Let's get the fancy check.
Nice. Barry, get your camera?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, we actually, um, thanks to Bear and the Foxborough Reporter, they already done a nice piece, uh, last week. For those that, uh, don't know or didn't see the article, uh, basically, our service organizations came to our, uh, to be our heroes and our rescuers this time. Uh, we've been looking to, uh, get a new Sparky outfit. For those that have seen him at parades and at different, uh, children's events, he's fifteen years old and is in really need to be replaced and they basically saved his life.
Did he cry?
Right, they gave him a, more than just CPR, they're giving him a complete face lift. And so, um, you know, they had asked, uh, a few years ago, what they could do to kinda help us out and we kinda planted that seed. And I, I can't say enough, and on behalf of all the members of Foxborough Fire Rescue, our service organizations, the J.C.s, the Lions and Rotary are, are wonderful. And this money, with, with a little bit of money that we got from a grant, will be giving us a brand spanking new Sparky outfit to keep our fire prevention and fire protection programs out there, so.
Oh, great.
I wanna thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, take the check back. That's it.
Do you guys mind coozing with the Selectmen people?
Roger, is it, is it true that you're gonna be Sparky?
That's an interesting, uh-
I could be anything you guys want. Actually, uh, for those that haven't heard, um, we have a really aptitude program and that they actually end up being the ones wearing it all the time.
I, I wore it at the Githy family, no, uh, the nine eleven event and it is hot.
Oh, yeah.
Great, guys, thanks a lot.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was one reason why you had to be here tonight, right?
Always. I never miss a meeting unless I'm being paid to.
You missed one a couple weeks ago.
Two, two weeks ago.
Yeah, good.
See you later.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, guys.
Thank you.
And then we'll formally accept that as an action item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Seven oh five, uh, Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen Goals for two thousand seventeen. Uh, when we were looking at the agenda, we really didn't have much to discuss, uh, this evening. So I thought it might be interesting, uh, try something new and put together sort of, uh, a business plan for the board and on some topics that the, the group together, um, kinda allay, um, some agenda items for the coming year. The majority of the board will, will remain intact. There's only one seat up for reelection. So at least four of the members will be on the board for another year. So I think it would be good to kinda outline, you know, some, some goals and strategies for the upcoming year. Just throwing it out there, I mean, in, in business, you always do a business plan for the upcoming year. And, yeah, you can't, can't identify everything, but you have a basis of some of the things that, uh, unfinished business or, uh, items that you'd like to address, that you can get on the agenda, um, for the coming year and start, start to do some, some background, um, research on some topics, uh, so you can have some real thoughtful discussion. And that was pretty much the, the basis of it. So I just wanna kinda throw that out there and get, get everybody's input and, you know, we can build a list together and, you know, start to, start to work towards getting those items. I mean, obviously, during the course of the year, things come up.
Right.
But there are some, some items that we know that are unfinished and, you know, um, actually made, made a list of some topics, such as the tax strategy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Should be look, looking at a, at a three or five-year plan and how it impacts, uh, the community. Expanded senior tax abatement programs. I know Randy mentioned that, you know? You know, these, these are things that we, we talk about, we talk about in passing. Some of them are good ideas, some of them maybe aren't some good ideas, but we should at least talk, talk about them. And don't let them just, you know, fall by the wayside. Let's, let's follow up on them. We should develop a town strategy on recreational marijuana sales. You know, that's, that's new legislation. We, we have to come up with a strategy for that. The fire station sale development strategy, downtown sewer expansion plan. You know, laundry building, you know, are we gonna demo that? We get, we should, we should work with planning board and come up with a, a strategy for that. And other deed restricted buildings. We have other deed restricted buildings in, in the community. Maybe we should put together a long-term strategy for that as well. We have the regional dispatch proposal coming up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the MBTA pilot program, that's gonna be on our next agenda anyway. But these are the type of things, um, that we should be discussing, getting on paper, building a business plan. So when things get hectic and things start to, start to hit us fast and furious over the course of the year, these things don't get pushed aside. I mean, a lot of these are, are pretty hot topic items anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But there's, there's stuff that maybe not as, as hot topic, but, um, we should, we should get them down on paper and, and build to get these things done.
It's a good idea, 'cause like, take the, the marijuana one, I mean, that, there's definitely some zoning stuff that applies to that, so it's not like a quick type of thing. So if we're ahead of the, the curve on that and a lot of those other things, so.
I, I think that, that whole, that whole dynamic's changing on an ongoing basis. They, they passed legislation and really, people are kinda scrambling to figure out-
Yeah.
What it all means.
Yeah.
You know, you're talking about the senior, uh, program. I know the town of North Reading just had legislation passed by, 'cause you have to go legislative for this.
Right.
To give, uh, breaks, you know, tactic. The easiest thing to do is just take that North Reading legislation, have Representative Barrows contact them, plug in the name of Foxborough and file it. I mean, it's, it's basic, that's already been vetted, you know, it's, it's basic education, education, legislation. So we might wanna, um, contact Representative Barrows about that.
Yeah, that was one of the ones, um, I was actually up in Reading when, um, when they had it in town halls, appearing before the planning board and I, I saw that the, um, they were having a public meeting on the, on the senior tax abatement strategy, uh, in preparation for town meeting. And there's only one other community that really does it and that's Sudbury. So Sudbury has one, uh, active. Reading just passed it at town meeting, so that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Worked with, uh, Representative Barrows to, to do that. But though, these, these are the, the type of discussions that, that we should be having as a-
And some of them are easy fixes, other ones require a much more detailed discussion. I can tell you that the, uh, the press has reached out to us on, on the issue of marijuana to see if, you know, if we're planning to do anything with, you know, obviously, there's still a lot of information that's coming out. Paige Duncan has already attended a seminar on, on the topic. Apparently, Foxborough was one of the communities in the state that actually didn't pass it, if you look at it on a local level. And, um, so as a result, the question is, okay, what are you planning to do about it, if that's the case? And, um, we, we haven't had any discussion about it because we're still trying to figure out what we can do. We don't know what those options are at this point. So we're, we're gonna try and lay them all out for you, uh, probably, you know, within the next month or so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the whole, my whole thought behind this is it's to try and be as proactive, where we can be proactive versus a hundred percent reactive.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Well, I thought that, that, you know, it, one of the things that struck me, um, during the budget discussion and, and Jim made the point that, you know, we, we should've taken this up before, or I don't, maybe it was one of you that said we should've taken this up before, we should set a date and just hold a, a budget summit meeting. And just, and just, and bring everybody together and say, this is, you know, we, we do the, the review of the, of the, of all the, the, uh, strategies and all the, all the, the budget information. But we wanna have a big, broader discussion perhaps, and that's the time to have is, okay, is, is there anything out there that, that, you know, beyond just saying we're gonna, let's cut it, I mean, are there things that we haven't addressed? That we, we wanna have a full discussion on the whole picture. And then to see what we should be looking at in terms of strategies for the community.
That's why, you know, have a, have a plan together.
Right.
So you can, you can pinpoint, all right, well, we wanna have a, uh, a, a tax strategy session. What, what's gonna be the impact this current fiscal year, three to five years out, when's the best time to do that? Probably July, either June or July, I would think. Maybe that's not the best time, but, I mean, that would be up to you to, to bring that back to the board saying, all right, these, we know what your, what your goals are for, for two thousand seventeen. This is the plan that the, that the board put together. These are the, these are the milestone dates where we should be having these discussions. Where it's, you know, where it's appropriate. I mean, some of these things might not be appropriate to set dates, but as long as you have a plan, nothing kinda gets pushed to the side.
Well, it's interesting, because there was somebody, I used to work with, a colleague, used to say to me all the time, he says, we're already late.
Yeah.
And, and he's right, because every time we bring something up, it's like, it's, all right, we're already three or four steps too late. So now is an opportunity for us to have the conversation where, um, because, you know, I think now is, if, if you, if you end the calendar year, it gives you a good perspective on going forward into the next year as to one of the things, the hot topic issues that we already know about right now.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be more. I can, I can assure you of that. There'll be, there'll be new issues that we haven't even talked about.
And these, these items give us a roadmap, so as we meet with department heads or opportunities come up from the public or whatever, uh, we attend meetings, knowing what your priorities are for the year really help us to manage.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I just threw some items down on a piece of paper as, as I was thinking about them. By no means is that, is, is that the list. I think everybody should, you know, have input in this and maybe collectively come up with a, a more comprehensive list.
What's the best way to go about that?
Well, I think, I think what you should do is, is, you, I don't think you wanna decide it all tonight, but you can, but you know, I think what you-
Start creating a list.
First of all, Jim's not here, so I won't do anything unless the full board was, was, was here.
So create, start thinking about things that people have been talking to you about, as individual board members.
Yeah.
In that way, you're really being reactive to the citizens of the community.
Oh, and I think the fact that Dave put this on the agenda, maybe, you know, a yearly-
Thank you.
This being on the yearly agenda as the last meeting of the year is to start thinking about for next year, the goals. So I think that's a great idea, Dave.
I, I agree and, and there's, you know, we, oftentimes, we'd, we'd talk about it, we had, we talked about it briefly during, like, my, my evaluation, but this is really something that we should start earlier. So I think this is a good time to have the conversation. So you've got, your next meeting in January is starting to fill up pretty quick, you know, a lot of stuff we're gonna be getting ready for the, it's almost too late for the, the annual town meeting, because now we're, we're talking about stuff-
They haven't started it.
Yeah, they haven't even started. It's al, it's almost too late for it, so, uh, that's okay. I mean, that means that you, you, you could prepare yourself for this, for this fall town meeting if you needed to. So, um, you know, just remember, it's a constant cycle. And just prepare yourself for those two, two timelines, the two annual timelines.
Yeah, I mean, we, in the, in the business plan, you can set, you can set your timelines for, all right, we need to start discussing topics for, for the fall town meeting on, you know, by such and such a date.
Right.
You know, 'cause the last thing you wanna do is get, get caught flat-footed and try and scramble and start to, to bury, uh, AdCom with all these, these warrant articles and everything else. And, you know, they end up having to meet every single night. It's, it's really not fair. If we can, with a little bit of foresight, we can, we can do a better, better job scheduling and, um, you know. Everybody's, everybody's volunteers. So if we can spread out some of these, some of these meetings and, you know, some of these topics over the course of a, of a longer period of time, I think, um, I think you'll have a lot more thoughtful discussion on it.
So, um, I had down tax strategy and budget discussion, expanded tax abatement programs for seniors, recreational sale of marijuana, deed restricted properties.
Fire station.
Fire station.
Downtown sewer.
Yeah.
Regional dispatch.
Yeah.
MBTA pilot program.
Downtown sewer.
Sewer. Yeah. Would you get that one?
Yeah.
And then maybe do a budget summit in June or July. There's already a budget calendar that exists that Randy puts together, so I almost envisioned this all coming together on a board docs calendar, the, the contract date, notification dates, the, you know-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Open the warrant, close the warrant, warrant articles, do, like, just a budget, you know, discussions. We could create something like that.
Um, I think downtown redevelopment is just, uh, it's just not, it's not just about the fire station. It's about downtown redevelopment.
Yeah.
I think you look at, um, Route One redevelopment, redevelopment. Because those are, those are critical issues to the, the overall financial health of the town, I think.
It also falls into the, uh, the tax strategy as well.
It does, actually.
Widening the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
And what, what the impact will have on the, on the taxpayer. So, it was just, it was just some topics to get, get people thinking a little bit. So we have, um, our first meeting in January is when?
The tenth.
The tenth? Is that, we, we should be able to spend, you know-
Few minutes on it.
Few minutes on this. I, I'd, I'd like to bring that back.
Mm-hmm.
Let's put that on the tenth. We, we do have personnel board coming, but it's just a few small policies and I'm gonna send them to you tomorrow if you need to look at, um, we have one public hearing, I think, on the tenth, don't we?
We're not gonna be here.
I think so, yeah.
Probably, Bill, while I can mail it in.
Um, is the, is the tenth too soon? You wanna go to the following meeting?
Twenty-fourth.
It'd be better for me.
Okay.
Because I won't be here on the tenth.
The one thing we, we, um, gotta talk about is the regional, uh, regional, uh, dispatch.
And that's supposed to be, what, third week in January?
Yeah, they're, they're looking at right now, we're looking at-
In that week of your meeting.
It's part of my report tonight, but I'll tell you that we're looking at doing something on the seventeenth of January to do a, a presentation of all four towns. And that'll start the discussion in each of the towns.
Would that be a meeting that we would go to Mansfield today?
I believe so, yeah. I think we're gonna shoot for Mansfield. No, no, Eastern, they, they changed it to Mansfield, because it's gonna be, because Eastern's just too far away. It's just too, too removed. So regional, um, it's gonna be in Mansfield at this point.
All four Board of Selectmen will attend.
Could we have Jay's office send out a copy of that legislation for North Reading for the senior abatement? Just to give us an idea of what it said and, because if we're gonna, that, that requires legislation. If we do that, that requires town meeting vote to authorize Jay to file any legislation so-
You say North Reading or Reading?
North. That was North Reading, it was, um, uh-
It's actually a town of Reading.
The, was it, was it minority, I know that-
Is it, is it Reading?
It's, um, minority leaders. He put it out there in Mansfield. So he's North Reading, unless he has, does he have it ready? He may have Reading also, anyway. I mean, and it's nice if we could, if, if this legislation is something we're interested in and the wording is there and we just substitute Foxborough, we'd file it right away. The sooner you get it in there, the quicker-
Yeah.
They attend to it, you know? And if it's already been vetted, it's a lot easier to get through.
Is that something we would have to get a town meeting vote on, before we submit it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you need the town to approve before it gets submitted to legislation.
Yeah, but you really wanna look at it, too, and see if it, if it's, needs to be tweaked for Foxborough or-
So you already have a pretty good list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just, you know-
Can you email us that list, just so we can double-check it and look at it and see if we wanna-
Some of the, the, one of the other things we've kind of visited, but we've sort of, it, it got, um, pushed off is coming up with compensation strategy. So as we re-enter contract negotiations and we deal with the non-union group, knowing what the board's strategy is for compensation. And it, again, it's tied to the tax thing, it's all sort of interconnected. And maybe even strategy regarding as we approach, um, health insurance discussions with the unions as well. Just knowing where the board stands and what the three to five-year picture on that is.
Yeah. Okay. So if you wanna bring it back on the agenda for the twenty-fourth day-
Yeah.
Gives everybody time to kinda digest the topics and, and think about, you know, some of the things that they think should be on it.
Well, the, the one thing, the compensation strategy, we're gonna have almost done by the end of the month.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe come off your list pretty quick.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's fine. Hopefully, look, I'll come off the list.
Yeah, there's a few that could come off, I mean, I just- Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's okay, that's what, and then you can add new things, if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a fluid list. Things will come out, things will come on.
Absolutely, yeah.
But at least it's, it, it sets the, the roadmap for where, where you're heading.
Yep. And each thing has, like, sort of a ripple effect when you talk about dispatch or there are other opportunities for regionalization that we can look at, you know, so each thing-
It's there a lot, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Each thing brings up really good discussion.
Yeah, so I said, if you can email us all that and then we should prioritize it, put it in an order, which, you know, it's time-sensitive.
You know, some of the things that, you know, um, you know, it's not really relevant necessarily as a policy matter, but things, ways in which we can just talk about reducing the cost of operations. And one of the things we're working on right now is, um, is purchasing all our streetlights and, uh, and then, and then redoing them with LEDs, so that we can, and then reduce the cost, it'll reduce the fixed cost that we've been getting charged all these years. Once we own them, which we own them in five years, we, we do a lease purchase arrangement, we bought, we, and then we, we, um, turn them all over to LEDs, which are much more efficient to use to operate. And, um, we eliminate the, the acquisition cost for, after the next five years. Something we, they did in, you know, my previous community, but something we're, we're actively working on right now.
Who'll maintain them, once we own them?
Actually, with, we've thought about actually possibly contracting with the town of Mansfield. That's a possibility. You know, we've, we've looked at that possibility. Or we'd, we'd, we'd hire a company that would just come in and maintain them. But it's one, one, not, one possible regionalization option, since they have another electric light company.
You know, it's, uh, another issue, um, I read in the paper that the town of Foxborough has a hundred thousand dollars from mitigation from Plainridge, but we haven't, we haven't requested it.
Yeah, well, well, the reason why that's, we, we've looked at that, there's no, there's no real, we haven't been able to identify any real mitigation impacts, because we've, we've looked at that. I've, I've talked with Paige and we sat down, we looked at, and we, we've not been able to identify any real, because it's really been so dispersed that we've not seen any real, and the, you know, you can request it, but you have to be able to defend it. And the question is, where's the impact? I haven't seen one. Nobody has.
What about roads taking the shortcut through town?
My, the traffic on my street, and I live on the street that people would, has actually been less since they changed how Route One is.
Yeah.
Because now you can turn on Route One.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I was one of the ones always not for that at all, because of, I anticipated our traffic would triple. Not at all.
No.
Yeah.
So how much time do we have to come up with a recent, and what happens to the money if, if-
Well, it just, it stays in, in this account. I, I don't know how long it stays in the account, to be honest with you, but, um, but after a certain period of time, obviously, there's no impact, there's, you know, the money goes back to them. It's like a bond, is what they did. It's like they bought, they put a bond out there that says, this money, this money will be sent-
Mansfield was going after it for-
Police, was it?
Yeah, like for, uh-
Investigation or something.
Just, yeah, like, it was really strange, actually, to do a study on, on the increase in crime.
Right.
Try to tie it to Plainridge.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, um, but-
Well, there should've, there should've been some written parameters.
Yeah, there, there are, there are some, some, so you, you have to be able to defend it. It can't be just something that you just think of real quick and say, okay, we want that.
Yeah.
It has to be evidence that you've actually experienced an impact. So, we talked about it, we haven't been able to find anything, we're just, because they reached out to us and-
I mean, I don't think there's been any increase in crime outside of the normal, you know, break-ins and stuff.
No, really.
Great.
So, um, we're off to seven twenty-five. Uh, just for Selectmen's update, I just wanna, as everybody knows, uh, we lost somebody, um, recently, you know, Jim Freeman, way too early, uh, very dear friend. Uh, I, I have to say, Pastor Bill Dudley's eulogy was terrific. As far as eulogies go, that was probably one of the, one of the best eulogies I've, I've ever heard. But I just wanted to mention that our thoughts and prayers go out to the Freeman and the Igo family. And, um, you know, you, you see the community, you know, come together, uh, in support. And that's, that, that's what makes this community different. No matter how big you are, how small you are, it's the, it's the community's support when someone's in need. And I think that's what makes this town special. So, um, that's all I have for Selectmen's update. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Nope, I don't.
All right. All right, Bill, you're up.
I'm up. Well, I put my notes in here, I guess it didn't work very well. Still trying to figure this out. So in case everybody's wondering, we're actually using board docs tonight. And, um, this is live and in person, so, uh, we're still trying to figure it out. And we'll, we'll work, figure it out as soon as we can get back into it, but anyways. Um, just a couple of things. Um, one is the fact that, um, I did actually write a couple of things down. Uh, the Wausen Pavilion is actually constructed. Uh, I don't know if they've actually finished the roof. They know that we're trying to get the roof finished before Christmas. I'm not sure if they were able to get it done, but, but it's, it's fully constructed, so you'll see, um, if anybody wants to go down and take a look at it. It's, it's come out really, really nice. They did a beautiful job. So thanks to the, to the committee that pulled that together and, uh, Bill Kispow, who was sort of like the behind-the-scenes, behind-the-scenes guy that, that pulled it all, and sort of coordinated all the construction and everything else, so. And, uh, to the committee that, that really made that happen, so that was, so really well done. And then, secondly, um, uh, the Fire Chief notified us today that we had another save at the, at Gillette this weekend. We had somebody who had, had, suffered a heart attack in the stands during the Patriots-Bills game. Um, I'm told that the Fox Twenty-Five is actually gonna cover it, the story, uh, tonight, so we're, you're getting it, you know, before they, they do. What happened was this gentleman, sixty-one years old, was in the, the two-hundred level, uh, sustained a heart attack. Uh, two off-duty firefighters from, uh, surrounding community, we don't know which community it was, they haven't been able to get to distribution. Um, they were able to, um, uh, perform CPR. Uh, the two police officers that were in the stands assisted and then, then the paramedics arrived and, and the team arrived to, to offer him the, uh, the fibrillator as well. And, um, they were able to bring him back. And, uh, I'm just told that he's been, actually been released from hospital as early as today. So he actually, uh, they, they brought him to the hospital, I think it was in Norwood, and, um, he's, uh, he's doing, doing much better.
Wow.
So, um, and then I guess there was another save as well, but it was earlier, it was a second save. I, I don't know, have all the details of that one, but I think that was, that was worked with, with a lot of our team, team members. So thanks to everyone who participated in that save. I, you may, you may get more information on it tonight on the news, but, uh, great story to tell. So, thanks to everyone who participated in that save. I, you may, you may get more information on it tonight on the news, but, uh, great story to tell, especially somebody to get a great Christmas present.
Day before Christmas.
The day before Christmas, and I'm sure the family truly appreciates that. So, that's all I have.
Good. I'll make it quick. I'm losing my voice.
By the way, I wanna, I wanna say Happy New Year and Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy Hanuk- Happy Hanukkah, which was the same day. This is your first time in forty years, right, Mike?
Yep, first time in forty years.
So, this is just for a refresher. Um, this was the personnel policy that was accepted at the May twenty-sixteen town meeting. Um, it was effective for FY seventeen, so we're currently functioning under this policy. Um, it basically, if you turn to section six of the document, it up, it outlines the adoption and amendment of personnel policies is, that's the reason I'm bringing this up tonight. The Personnel Board has been hard at work for about eighteen months now since they were reformed, and they have been, um, reviewing all of the town's policies. Some of them have already accepted, uh, a vacation policy, an anti-harassment policy, a vehicle policy. Those are already, um, becoming part of our policy manual. But we're gonna be coming to you next week, um, on, I mean, next meeting, January tenth, to, um, preview some additional policy revisions. We've decided, and we hope you like the approach, that we're gonna bring them in small bursts, so that we don't bring you fifty policies at once. So, there'll be five small policies. I'll be emailing you tomorrow with the proposed language and the old language, showing clearly where the changes are. Um, this outlines that, you know, the Personnel Board will have a public meeting to talk about the policies, and then within twenty days recommend them to the Board of Selectmen in writing. So, I'll be recommending them to you in writing on their behalf, and then they'll be presenting them at the January tenth meeting. Um, so, just wanted to let you know that, um, that will be happening. You'll be receiving those with, um, you'll have two weeks to take a look at the, the language and ask any questions. Um, they've been working really hard. As those are done, we have a few more in process, so we just continually keep revising the policies. The idea is to have an electronic policy document, so that every time it changes, for example, our family medical leave policy, rather than writing out the entire family medical leave, we're gonna have the URL to the F M L A, tell you what the changes have been. Um, em- employees will be able to do it electronically. We'll also have a hard copy policy manual. So, as things change, we like to keep the most recent language from the Department of Labor intact, so that, um, and then, that was the purpose for redoing the entire personnel bylaw. Those of you who've been here for a while recall that this used to be a whole policy document, the bylaw, and every year it would get updated and, um, and amended at town meeting and adopted again. So, what we decided to do is just say, there will be policies, there'll be a personnel system, this is the process for policies, and then the document can stay a fluid document with, you know, every single time, you know, a policy changes, it'll be brought to you. So, um, it's a great way for the town management, the Personnel Board, and the Board of Selectmen to all look at policies from all different directions. So, that's all I have. We'll be sending those to you and meeting on, on January tenth.
Action items?
Alrighty, so I'm gonna use my Board Docs. All right, move to accept a gift donation in the amount of twenty-two hundred dollars for the Foxborough Fire and Rescue to be used for the purchase of replacing Sparky the Fire Dog animated suit from the Foxborough J C's, but also the Lions and the Rotary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Um, move to accept a gift donation in the amount of fifty dollars for the Veteran Services Gift Fund from Helen Olson.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. All right. Now, I've got new agenda item. Is that just a, um...
Typo.
Typo or spacer?
It might've just created a different item if the person...
Okay. Uh, then, next one. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two-hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Friends of Foxborough Veterans.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you. Okay, uh, move, uh, to accept a gift donation to the Council on Aging in the amount of two-hundred and ninety-five dollars for programs from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve ex- uh, the extended liquor license for CBS Scene until two AM on New Year's Eve.
Second.
For discussion? Um, so they're saying, the, the, the motion is to extend the liquor license, but, but our policy, Ginny, you brought up that policy the last time, right? Isn't there a definitive...
Extend like a service.
They can stay open.
Right.
They have to stop serving it, I believe it's twelve-thirty.
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 Okay.
They can stay open, yeah.
Right, so, so the way this, I made the motion, though, is to extend the liquor license. So, was that extending it till twelve-thirty also, or do you just see the difference I'm making there?
Yeah, I think, I think it's just, it's just the service, service can, they can, it's just the, uh, extended...
The closing time.
Closing time, extend the closing time.
Yeah, it, it, there was a letter from two thousand fifteen saying, you know, to them, approve your request to extend your operating hours, January one, two thousand sixteen, from one AM to two AM. So, that covers...
Okay, good.
With no alcohol service past twelve-thirty. That's the standard letter.
Good.
So, I think the proper motion would be to say, to extend the closing time from one, one AM to two AM.
Okay, so I, I'd like to, uh, change my motion or retract it. Oh, well, I gotta go back. I hit the button. Move to extend the closing time for CBS Scene to two AM on New Year's Eve.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, with no alcohol service after past twelve-thirty.
Right.
Okay.
As amended?
Yeah, as amended, with no alcohol service after twelve-thirty.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Uh, move to approve, uh, the election of a voting delegate for the M I I A Annual Meeting on January twenty-first, twenty-seventeen?
So, just by way of explanation, um, the board, the town of Foxborough is, is afforded one voting delegate for, here for the annual meeting of the, of the M I A Board, or the M I A Board of Directors. And so, it's, so that delegation could, it could be that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen or the person, a person delegated by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to serve, uh, who's gonna be attending the meeting. So, I don't know who here is gonna plan to go. Are you, are you planning to go? Is anyone here planning to go on Saturday the twenty-first?
I can't.
When is it? It's Saturday the twenty-first. It's part of the M M A Annual Meeting.
It's a luncheon.
It's a luncheon. It's in Boston. It's at the, uh, Sheraton in Boston.
I don't know if I'm gonna be here.
Yeah, and I haven't planned on going.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna be here? Okay. You can name me the delegate then, if that's the case.
There you go.
I'm, I'm on the Board of Directors, so I have to go anyway, so...
Can you, can you vote?
Yes, I can vote, yeah. As long as you...
Yep.
It was, it says whoever, if a board cannot attend, then the, then the Chief Administrative Officer can go.
So, I'll, I'll amend my motion to move to, uh, appoint, uh, our town manager, William Keegan, as a, uh, voting representative delegate, uh, from Foxborough to the M I I A Annual Meeting on January twenty-first, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Uh, move to approve the appointment of Deb Wendell as associate member, um, to the Historic Commission, but I think that's wrong. She's going from associate member to a full member, correct? She was the associate member?
That's what it says in the, uh, letter.
In the letter.
It didn't seem to save, yes. So, she's going to associate to full member.
To full member, okay. So, let me go back and redo it. So, uh, move to approve the appointment of Deb Wendell from an associate member to a full member of the Historic Commission expiring five one eighteen.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve the twenty-seventeen licenses.
Should we name the licenses?
Now, should we name the two?
Yeah.
I would, there's only two.
All right. Uh, the twenty-seventeen licenses, uh, for McDonald's on two-twelve North Street and Star's Auto Sale, ninety-five Washington Street.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve the change of the D B A from Nick's Stay House and Dimitri's to the Olive and Mint Ambrosia.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, should we do the, uh, minutes separately or approve them, both of them?
Whatever you want.
Oh, okay.
Depends on who was, depends on who was present. If, if all of you were present, then you can all vote on it.
Yeah, I think we were. So, move to approve the Board of Selectmen meetings of eight twenty-three sixteen and nine six sixteen.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussions?
No, I looked through them. They looked good.
Yeah, I didn't find any. It stuck out.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Uh, and that's it?
The approval of extended hours?
Yeah, it's...
Or was there one that I missed?
Seven point one two.
It's seven point one three. There's two more.
There's two more.
Oh, okay, yep, sorry. Uh, move to extend the hours of closing, um, to one-thirty on New Year's Eve for the Scorpion Bar and Grill, uh, with the same, um, no service of alcohol past twelve-thirty.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Um, none discussion. If you read the letter, um, the request is to not to serve alcohol later than one AM. It's actually twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty, we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll make it a...
So, we'll make sure we note that in, in the letter. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question about this one before we read it? I saw the email. Was, has this been on the agenda long enough for us to even discuss it tonight?
It's an, it's an action item.
It's just an action item, yeah.
So, action items, it doesn't matter? Okay. All right. Okay, good.
Um, uh, move to, um, extend, let me just go back, um, food service hours and closing of the, um, rally Pointon Inn and Pub till two AM on New Year's Eve with, uh, liquor, uh, liquor sales, uh, no later than, uh, twelve-thirty.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Now I think I'm done.
Vera?
I believe you are. Yes. So, the main thing I have is, was it Reading or North Reading that just passed the legislation?
Well, um, Brad, the, the, the guy who passed it is from North Reading, and I don't know whether his territory is North Reading inward or just North Reading. So, it's, it's Brad Jones is the...
To be determined.
Yeah. All right. So, basic, I'll, I'll figure out a way to, to thread that needle where it...
Actually, you know, just call, um...
I'll just call Brad Jones's office.
Yeah, or you could call Jay.
Or Jay's office. Either one of them. See which one gets...
It looks like it's Reading. I'm reading. I just Googled it.
So, he must, he must represent Reading in North Reading.
That would make sense. Um, cool. Uh, so, the heart attack situation, there was someone who had a heart attack at the Bills game. Was there two people you said?
At the, uh, Jets game. The, the Jets and, uh, it was, there were, I believe there was another one, too. The, the chief did not elaborate on that one. This one was, I think, I'm probably more extensive.
I'll go past the chief tomorrow, but he should've pestered me today. That's...
Yeah, he just, well, he just, he, he literally told me the details, uh, before the meeting tonight, so...
Oh, no, I'm not blaming you. You're safe. Um, so, the third thing is that, uh, I saw a little bit of this explanation when people are talking about it on the internet, but just to be clear, uh, why hasn't the flag been up for a while? I heard there's a repair going on.
Thank you for raising that. So, the, the flagpole, the, uh, the cable actually snapped. So, um, so there are two things. They, they, they're not happy with the way the, the pulley is structured, so we're actually gonna go with a different kind of pulley mechanism, and, and the cable itself is gonna be stronger. I think the weight of the, of the big flag actually was put, was a lot, there was a pretty big strain on that. And it's, it's okay when it doesn't rain. When nothing gets heavy, it gets pretty heavy when it gets wet. So, I think that was part of the challenge. So, it's, the pots have been ordered. They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna fix it. We're just waiting on those pots coming in. The, the company's already agreed they're gonna fix it.
All under warranty?
Yes, all under warranty.
So, no extra cost to the town. When did, uh, and when was the exact date when this got, went up? And when was, when the snappage happened?
The, the, when it broke?
Yeah.
September seventeen.
Yeah, it was about this.
Maybe, yeah.
It's about, just about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
It's about two weeks ago.
So, it broke about two weeks ago, and it went up in September?
No, no, it went up in, uh, the, the big flag.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember when the, when the big flag pole went up.
June, June.
It was June?
Flag day.
Flag day, June fourteenth.
And that, just for the record, that large flag was recommended by that flagpole company that that would be fine to fly on there. So, it's not like we did anything out of the ordinary.
So, it was right, you flew the...
That's why they said, we'll take care of it.
So, you flew the recommended flag, but it got heavy in terms of the wind. It got in the rain, and it ended up snapping the cable. Is it gonna be a smaller flag flying when it gets, when it's...
No, I, I, well...
We have two flags. We fly the large one on certain occasions, special occasions, and it's only up for a week or so, depending on Founder's Day or Fourth of July. That might be the longest period it flies.
And the big flag was when it, uh, was, was snapped it?
Yeah. I believe, I believe.
That, that's the, that's the, that's the current theory. All right, now, it's a mystery solved. Um, yeah, and I think that is about everything, with the exception of, do any of you guys individually as Selectmen have any thoughts about the future of marijuana in this town, or have you not really ca- tho- thought on it yet?
Ken, I mean...
I don't know. We haven't presented any options for them. I think we'll have, uh, Paige come in and, and present some ideas.
Excellent.
Because she, uh, she actually went to an all-day seminar on topic.
Perfect, great.
I think it's interesting that as, as a town, we voted against it.
Yeah, by a small margin.
By a small margin.
But it was still different from the rest of the state.
Yeah.
And you'd actually track with the rest of the state pretty, pretty well, at least in terms of who won and who lost with everything. That is interesting. All right, well, thank you very much.
General Manager Jenny?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second. Uh, under discussion, I just wanna wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year. Um, be safe, and go Pats.
Go Pats, yeah, in Miami. That's right. Big game this weekend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Right, everyone.
Have they locked up home field advantage, or is that still...
If they win, if they, they gotta win this weekend, or the Raiders have to lose.
We have things to sign.
That works.
That possibility exists since their quarterback is out.
That looks like a nasty, uh...
Yeah, it was a bad break.
That's gonna be bad for the playoffs.
All right, so, thank you, everyone.